Started here for the special call meeting. The planning commission to review. Z O T A 2025 dash oh seven R V campground zoning ordinance text amendment. And this is a public hearing. This will I opening up a public hearing.
That's all their business, right?
We can get started with the open business. David and I just remember to turn our phones off so if you got phones and turned it off yet, please do so.
Gotcha.
Okay. So what we have prepared for you all this evening, both the public and the commission, good evening, we do have a slideshow here, just like always. I will say that it is pretty much line for line, word for word of the code that's proposed. So in lieu of me beginning by talking at everybody and reading every single line, which I'd be glad to do if requested. I know we've kind of seen different versions of this so far. If you all don't mind, I'd like to open it up to the commission's discretion to potentially ask questions and clarification on specific sections or items. And if we need to go through the document, you know, bit by bit at that time we can, I can put it up on the screen. Hope that makes sense.
I think that's an excellent idea instead of reading through everything.
There are no substantive changes since the last time we reviewed it in our meeting, right?
No, nothing of great substance. The version you have in front of you, just to clarify, for the most part, in format in general, it looks very different from what either the public or yourselves have seen previous to your workshop. The formatting you see before you now is reflective of how we are trying to format our code as a whole. So the format it's presented in now is what we're moving towards as an entire document. You all saw those text amendments in August, I believe, that follow the same structure. Also in here are presented the definitions that need to be edited and/or added that reflect and define the terms within this proposed ordinance for said use. There are also, at the end of the document, some small changes to the zoning designations, those categories which the restrictions and allowances for this zone exist elsewhere in the code. So that's some of the different stuff that's in here. It's just procedural things that amend circular references, so to speak. So I'd like to open it up to the commission. We can either start at the top, start in the middle, wherever you like, and once we work through for some time, I would then like to open the podium to the general public and then we can kind of start working through things together.
I don't know if I'm starting at the beginning because I'm not sure where it's referenced here. But last time we did have a lot of discussion about the insurance policy.
Okay.
And challenges around that.
Could you do me a huge favor? Do you have that right there in front of you, what section that may be?
No, that's why I said I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just remembering what some of the-
Pop quiz right off the jump, right?
Okay. I was just thinking of some of the specific things we talked about.
It starts on item six here on the screen.
Okay.
So the language is still the same. At this time, you know, the office and staff have not edited any of this verbiage. It's been the indication and the intention of pretty well everybody we've discussed the ordinance with, to include yourselves, that some sort of surety be in place in case of repair, replace scenarios, or worst case scenarios of environmental damage and concerns. At this time, right now, the best option we've got is staff that we feel that we've put in before people or evidence of existing policies thereof is insurance. We have been provided with examples by members of the community who've been very gracious in their time. So that's the verbiage as it is. If for some reason you as a commission would like to pursue something different, or if we have a suggestion with some merit this evening, you know, something we don't know, you know, or by our counsel, but also beyond that, you know, we do have some magistrate representation this evening. If y'all do choose to forward this on, the fiscal court has discretion to make suggestions and changes as well. They may know best about what it takes to ensure the safety and cleanliness of our county. So.
Mr. Murphy, attorney, sent us a letter and in it, section three E, he states in section eight D, it'd be extremely difficult to obtain a sewer insurance policy. A general liability insurance policy should suffice. So I know nothing about insurance, but.
Well, if I may speak broadly.
Yep.
The intent of the ordinance is for some sort of coverage.
Right.
Whether that be standalone coverage that is explicitly a separate policy for the septic, or if it can be demonstrated that within their general liability, there is coverage therein, whether it be explicitly, you know, as umbrella or a rider. The intent of the ordinance is that there is some assurance that matches what we require.
Right. So as long as there is some insurance in place, it wouldn't have to specifically be for a sewage treatment.
Right. Again, the language I stated is proof of an active insurance policy against damages or failure. What form that comes in? I don't know that the ordinance or staff or the commission's intention is to be so specific to add another layer of limitation to a hurdle that's been expressed is, you know, just that a hurdle.
Okay.
So would it be appropriate to make the language a little bit broader and to take out the specific reference to failure of the private sewer facility?
Did you have something you want to share?
Yeah. I'm just thinking about how somebody interprets it five years from now versus the intent that we have here.
Okay. I'm going to think on that, Ms. Singer. If I could ask you to restate your question.
Okay. It sounds like I'm being grilled by attorney.
This is, yeah.
Is it appropriate to make this language broader rather than specifying the liability coverage for the failure of a private sewer facility versus general liability insurance that would also cover any of those types of failures?
I think the concern therein is that allowing it just to be general liability for the facility, which one would hope, you know, the facility as a whole, I think the intent here is that there need be some language that speaks directly to the concern of a failure of a system that could be environmentally damaging.
I agree. It could be a failure of a system without it being a liability issue for an insurance policy.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is why I'm wondering if we should have bond or something set up for that.
Versus insurance?
Versus insurance, because the operator's going to have to have insurance if they're in business.
Right.
I mean, they don't have to do that. A bond or something that's, and when I say that, I am not pretending to be some expert on bonds. It's just that what few times we've been in court on bonds, they just seem so much simpler than an insurance policy where, oh, exemptions and, I mean, everything under the sun comes out of those things. But a bond that just simply secures the operation of the treatment facility, whatever that might be. If it goes down, we certify that it's down. It's not a bloody way. I'm sure some, I don't know some, some way to make it work. But as opposed to an insurance policy which then looks for liability, the thing doesn't work.
Right.
The thing stopped working, the thing, something wouldn't maintain, well, that's what needs to be secured. That just doesn't sound like insurance to me.
But on the other hand, Charlie, a bond, if we have a fifty thousand or hundred thousand dollar bond at today's prices, and it doesn't go down for twenty years, that amount may not cover half of it anymore.
That's why there needs to be a review provision in there too.
Okay.
Review. And just, and I gave sight to you, so what we do when they put up bonds for public improvements for development, we aren't using the same price as we use, you know, five years ago. They're using those and then they're reviewing those, so, but that has to be in there, that you're right.
Which is A under six about the, it's referencing the insurance policy, but the same would apply to a bond.
Yes.
And if I may, well, two points of, two points here. Commissioners, if you could, please just make sure your microphones are on so we can have a clean record, please. Reminder that they record, not amplify, so it's very important.
Thank you.
Also, I'm going to mention that he's, I thought I saw him, magistrate, there he is. Not to call him out specifically by name, but in a moment, once we start moving into public discussion, if I might call on him to speak his experiences with bonds as a magistrate through the city or the county government, rather. This might be an issue which, once the commission may make a recommendation to forward this to fiscal, they may lend their own context to issues such as these.
To Charlie's point, I just, from an insurance perspective, I think that could be just as challenging and maybe more challenging than a bond, given the situation I referenced in the last meeting about the Suffolletta Water Park and-
Right.
The coverage not covering things underground.
At this point, I believe, you know, with the recognition that it is a challenge, I believe it's staff's intention, the ordinance has written intentions, the community at large's intention is it would be much greater of a challenge to not have anything specific in there in the worst case scenario.
Okay. If I may, Chair Mifflin, obviously, Mr. Charlie's going to present on the totality of the ordinance as proposed, but this may be, again, an opportunity for the board to make specific recommendations to changes in language. Once we've heard everything, we could very easily add proof of an active insurance policy or surety bond against damages or failures approved for private sewer facility or something to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Fleming, that would be too easy.
Yeah.
Either or.
Well, basically what we're looking for is adequate security.
Right.
And there are probably other tools out there that we're not even thinking about. I don't know. But I just assume not limited, particularly to something which I find at least difficult to deal with as an insurance policy. But whether that's a bond, whether it's a, and I know staff will not like this part, but possibly a letter of credit, because we've had difficulties in the past when those things come up for renewal on a regular basis. And, but on the other hand, boy, they come up for renewal, you can look at the numbers.
Yeah, it gives a mechanism to trigger.
As long as it's adequate security, it gets reviewed, it is set to, you know, a reasonable amount, so it will take care of a system that doesn't work. Leave it to, you know, some imagination that we then, of course, have to approve or the county has to approve. Love to turn it over to the county to approve.
All right. Any other discussion about insurance or bonds here?
I think that was an excellent point by our director Holden over there that, you know, we've kind of bounced around of why not this, why not that, or surely makes it a lot easier.
Yeah. All right. Are there any other areas that we need to discuss?
Mr. Shirley, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I do believe it would be very appropriate to go over the modified density table.
Wholeheartedly agree. That was my next thought as well.
And then the other one that I believe would be beneficial for public comment is specifically related to the, what do we have here? The section four A, which deals with the length at which a RV site can be rented out. Rented or?
Consecutive day.
Yeah.
Okay. If I may kind of introduce our table here. This was integrated in one of the earlier versions of the ordinance. Granted, it was a little more restrictive, not as descriptive. There was much discussion about a scenario of, say, what happens when you have a user that has a horse arena or horse training facility or other form of like agri business of some sort, farm, and they say, hey, I've got clients or trainees or temporary workers or what have you. Can I put in three RV hookups for those folks passing through, family visiting, people using facilities? How do you address those? You know, do you hold those to the same highest standard of a three hundred unit park? Well, common sense says no, but they still need to have standards, there still needs to be a place where they fit, we still need to speak to those. So one of the newest additions you see in this table here is what we're calling accessory use. We're hoping that this will grant and give a place for those uses that are obviously necessary in our county. They make good sense. It will, you know, circumvent anybody that's trying to do the right thing and having to do the wrong thing. The last thing we want is an office is somebody calls in and say, hey, my neighbor's got three RV hookups, man, I thought we talked about this. So we want to give some sort of allowance for those sort of flexible uses. So what we've done here is you get two units for every five acres. You know, five acres is the minimum size parcel that's allowable and typically is seen now in agricultural zones. So starting at that base parcel size of five, you can progress. However, there is a maximum of five units allowable for this use, no matter the parcel size. So you don't get up to a hundred acres and all of a sudden you've got, what is that? Somebody do the math for me.
Fifty.
Forty, forty RV sites. You know, we don't want there to be any loophole of, okay, you've got a thousand acres, I'm not going to do that math. I went to Scott County schools. So that does give some freedom and flexibility, but it also closes the door for any abuse of that regulation. Does that make sense to the commission?
Yeah.
Very much.
Great. Excellent. We're pretty happy with that. Now, that being said, this category is also the most flexible in the size of roadway allowed for the use. Roadway width has been a large point of discussion as it pertains to these sort of developments. Again, you know, when you're talking minimum parcel size, a small farm, a horse facility that may be two, three turns, four turns off the interstate, through greater discussions with the county road department, sixteen foot road is typically what you got in most areas of the county, period. Shoulders, probably not. With the recognition that these small uses may be on one of those sixteen foot wide roads with placing a density cap on there, but allowing them to exist, staff has recommended that those be allowed to exist on a sixteen foot road. Again, these are not going to be high traffic uses, maximum of five units. The anticipation is that they're there for a purpose, not necessarily to recreate, but to work, to train, things of that nature. That's the intent. Does that explanation make sense so far?
And still with the same maximum amount of time in the verbiage, not-
The verbiage overall is inclusive for maximum of time. We did not take necessarily any specific use into the length of time.
Right.
And we can definitely get there.
Yeah. But it's in there, it's just not for permanent residency, I guess.
Yes, the explicit verbiage is there, is there is no intent for permanent habitation.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't want to get too off track. Remind me, we'll go straight there after this. So as you graduate through this chart here, as you see Xs being not permitted, and obviously the word permitted being, yes, it is permitted, as your intensity increases and your density increases, the road width requirements also increase. So again, a lot of these numbers came through discussions with the county road department that they were like, well, you know, let me think on it. Then they did go out and do some measuring. They also pulled all of their records from the past, I don't know how many years of, when they go out and pave, they take a measurement, they improve slightly thereon, and then hopefully in ten years when they come back to pave again, those small shoulder improvements can be paved over. A county road is a long lifespan, a long turnover, right? So you're looking at fifteen years to get eighteen inches at best. So with that being recognized, we did want to write a code that does allow the uses and also in certain places that make sense. So we've got increments of the sixteen foot road, which we've accounted for, eighteen foot wide road, nineteen and twenty. As your density and intensity increases, the minimum road width also does to mirror that, because we don't want to be drawing large numbers to a place without, you know, at least infrastructure that makes sense and our county can supply and potentially support. Before I continue to ramble, do we have any questions in specific about any of the cells in the chart?
So how many areas, I mean, I guess, I know they can't be exact, but you said most of the roads are sixteen in the county.
Correct. As explained to me.
What then, because we also talked a lot last time about not eliminating the possibility.
Correct.
So what's the realistic possibility of low, medium, and high density then relative to those road requirements? If most of the roads are sixteen, and obviously these are all going to be in the county.
Some of it is just, you know, I'll just use the phrase out of our control as an office, it comes down to proper siding. Granted, a lot of these requirements, obviously, they begin to whittle away at appropriate sites and available sites pretty quickly. That's just kind of the nature of it as far as the document is written in the interest of safety while also making it usable. But there is a provision in here within this subsection about roadways that does say that the improvements in the width need be within a half mile each direction of the, essentially the entrances.
So it doesn't have to be the entire length?
Correct.
Yeah.
So while we can compel as an office within our documents, any sort of development to improve along their frontage of which they own, beyond that, that might be a public-private agreement, it might be a circumstance of the site they've chosen, but that is the intent of the ordinance is to require it to at least be within a half mile of the development of the appropriate width.
Brett, if I can just add one thing-
Please do.
-as well. When we were looking at that sixteen foot wide road. Yes, majority of the county roads are sixteen foot wide. However, we have to remember too, there are also state roads throughout the county, and there are some of those that are significantly wider than that sixteen foot. And so while this applies to all of Scott County, not all of Scott County's roads are county roads. And so in looking at that, we do feel that there are a number of locations which would be eligible for this development.
And I think, you know, this is just speaking anecdotally, and I think this comment will make sense, that the more turns you are off an interstate, the more narrower the road, you know, so presumably, you know, the closer to the interstate you are, the better infrastructure you've got. That makes the most sense for a higher intensity use.
On this chart, back up to accessory unit, two units for five acres. And we keep going back to someone that has a show horse arena or something and bringing trailers in and RVs to stay in that general vicinity. If they have fifteen acres, those six units can be located at one spot. They don't have to be spread out over each five acres, do they?
Here's the counterpoint to that. You said six. The ordinance has written caps it at five, no matter the parcel size.
Okay. So we'll say-
If you got six acres.
Ten acres.
If you got ten acres, yeah, yeah.
So you're eligible for four units.
If you got fifteen, you get five.
But they don't have to be spread out over those two, two different five acre plots? They can be all put together?
Density is what it is. It doesn't, it's just like when we say, if you've got a twenty acre parcel-
Right.
-with one home, I'd like to put another house on it. We don't make you post and stamp it.
Okay.
The density speaks to the intensity of use. How the developer would or would not arrange said use is somewhat up to them, but also will somewhat be a function of our development requirements. You know, infrastructure has to be appropriate, stormwater, things of that nature, landscape, all of those things come into play to shape the scale and size the development. Where they put them is up to them within that sandbox.
Okay. Page seven, down at the bottom, item number two, conditional uses. If you don't mind me jumping right into this, it's similar to what we're talking about. So someone has a farm, oops, and they want to put cemetery or bed breakfast or kennels on there, they've got to use it, get a conditional use permit, and also for an RV area.
Correct.
They need a conditional use permit. Yes. Okay. So that it-
The intent here is-
It qualifies because the land is already agricultural. But they need the conditional use permit.
Here's the line in logic with that. So say, if somebody wants to give me something other than horse arena, go ahead. Say you've got a horse arena and it's five acres. Okay, you want two spots. What do we as a community or as the code, what do we get out of making a five acre established horse farm go through the process to rezone themselves to A1R? We don't get anything, and it kind of, it undermines a lot of the other stuff that's written in the ordinance as a whole, to require a smaller established parcel to rezone to something that, it just doesn't make sense. They're not a recreational property, they're a functional property with an accessory use.
And it might, they might sell it in a month and it might not matter, and that's-
And some traditional agricultural uses or intensity of uses or change of uses may not be allowable in that A1R now. It's limiting, it's expensive, I'm not going to lie about that. Rezonings are not cheap. That's what we're wrapping up. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, that does. Two units on five acres, is that one or two septic tanks?
That's going to be a health department question. The intent with all the ordinance is whatever the system is, however it's designed, that it's a suitable capacity for the density and units allowable. You know, but just like residential areas, for example, Victoria Estates, they're on four communal lagoons. If a larger RV development needs four dump stations and the state says that's okay, well, we have to yield our, you know, to their experience. I don't, I don't, you know, and honestly, it may not be a bad thing that there are separate, you know, stations and whatnot, you're not all relying on one. As we've spoken early on in the drafting of this code, while it's very important, it's staff's intention to get well out of the way on how they design those and who says it's appropriate.
So on small ones like that, is it anywhere you have to have that, or can people just go off-site and dump?
I'm sorry, Mr. Green, could you?
Is it in here that you have to have a septic system for those, or can you go off-site and dump? Because in issues like this, people might come for like a day or two, they might not dump.
Yeah.
That'd be normal?
Probably.
You all are RVs. You just come in, you might have an electric hookup and a pad, you go to the horse show at the horse park, or you spend a weekend there training your horse, and you leave. Does that allow that?
I think that's a fair question, because I also, you know, there are users in different areas that have, you know, in other jurisdictions and other states, you know, they use those holding tank things and they go elsewhere. Admittedly, the code as written right now requires every development to have some sort of sanitation facility. If it's the will of the commission, and I'll also look at Mr. Fleming over here, if that's something we need to look more at as a flexibility thing for the accessory use only.
So with the intent that an ordinance is generally applicable and supports the will of the people, the ordinance as written does say that private sewer facilities shall also include those facilities consisting of wastewater storage facilities that require emptying by pump truck or otherwise. And so we do entertain that you can put in a holding tank, you know, they dump it there, it gets pumped out, it goes somewhere else. To write something so specific as to exempt this particular section within that matrix from that requirement or any other requirement, I think goes beyond the scope of what we originally proposed. And to that, I would look at our Scott County Board of Adjustment to be able to make determinations.
As they do the application.
As they do the application.
Makes sense.
That would be my recommendation.
That would, what Brad's asking, be no different than an RV traveling through town and pull up out of Walmart and do their grocery shopping, and they plug into a post out there and stay overnight, well, they have no place to dump out there.
Sure.
And so they go on to Camping World or some other place that offers a dump station. And so if you didn't have a facility where you could hook a sewer up, you're not going to be dumping out there anyway. So, you know, if you can stay there overnight or two nights there and just have it in your holding tank in the RV, which-
Because that's what we're trying to hit with this, but I understand that it's got to go through Board of Adjustments anyway. They're going, they're already going through the process of asking for that, they could say, and-
And again, in this particular circumstance, with a development plan or having to meet these metrics, we're going to get to take a look at that. And that's where we got our horse arena again. And that's where we got our horse arena again. If the idea is that they're going to do, you know, a long, four-day weekend tournament kind of thing, you probably do want dump stations out there.
Yeah.
If they've got seasonal workers, who they know that are hooking up, and they're going to be there for extended amount of time, you need to make sure that that requirement's built in, even if it's just one or two stations.
Yeah.
But if there's some other use that we are not considering right now, that is just that touch-and-go, one-night pickup, move-on, then that's exactly where the Board of Adjustment and their ability to grant variances could come and play. But generally applicable, we want the facilities. On a rare occasion, they'd have to make that case.
Okay.
Just to briefly expand on the Board of Adjustment stuff, a conditional use, as recognized by the ordinance and what the Board of Adjustment on both city and county and other municipalities are empowered to do, a conditional use is one that is somewhat unique, not necessarily typically allowable within the zone, that the ordinance and the boards themselves recognize could have off-site impacts or differences to what would normally occur out there. So it's by nature, by pursuing that application, they're already showing that we're doing something different than normally would happen. And then the board imposes conditions thereof.
And that's a little bit easier to follow, too, because if the neighbors see an issue, they can go to Board of Adjustments, they can pull those-
Correct. Absolutely. You're exactly right.
I would use the word immediately.
Yeah.
Never happens.
That's way too strong a word.
They could start the process quicker than-
And conditional use permits are subject to yearly review.
Yeah.
So yes, it is another level of enforcement and tracking. You're right.
I'm very satisfied, but thank you.
You talked about shoulders when we were talking about the road width. Is this, we, I think initially had a requirement of shoulders in here?
I believe we did.
But is that gone? I couldn't find it, but I'm not reading every word either.
There is, let's see, roadways begins here. So again, we are able, as a body, to compel a developer to improve along their frontage. So that is still a requirement. There need be shoulder roadway improvements to include turn lanes, if applicable, et cetera, et cetera. We can still compel them to construct those along their frontage.
Just on their property, though.
The issue then became, with the county and state roads that are out and the unincorporated, if they don't have shoulder, and it's, you know, again, six miles from where you're going, or beyond that half-mile, are we writing an ordinance that nobody can use? So we do have to recognize the limitations of our infrastructure, yes.
Okay.
But we also wanted to write a code that does allow use.
No, that's understandable. Okay.
Okay, any other questions on the-
Link to the state.
Conditional use-
Link to the state.
Brad!
Let's see here.
I told you that old link to the state.
Is it forward or backwards?
Four A.
Four A. That's right, I even wrote that down, I probably should have looked. So the language, it was discussed at the library session, kind of went round and around in general.
Four A.
Basically, and the intent of the ordinance and what we've gathered in commentary is, to put it bluntly, nobody wants the RV parks to become mobile home parks. So without taking into consideration of, is it 29 days, is it 30 days, you know, what's the hotel tax, what's this, what that, you know, staff has determined that the best way to communicate the intent here is that the campsites may only be rented on a daily or weekly basis, so either day-by-day, week at a time, that sort of thing, but there shall be no permanent habitation in any vehicle on any site. Now, admittedly, some of this is going to be, going to have to be self-enforced by the development, but, you know, if we receive a complaint, code enforcement receives a complaint, whether it be a, seems to be, permanent habitation or an unsafe situation, we are empowered by the ordinance as a whole to, you know, begin enforcement and investigation. At the same time, we didn't necessarily want to put very, very strong restrictions on somebody as a business owner to limit their ability to have good tenants. So I hope that makes sense.
And obviously, the tax would still apply, it would just be up to the-
Ms. Singer, I have no idea anymore.
(laughing).
So I don't know if Lori, Lori is here.
It would be up to the owner to report it as-
Yeah, but we don't want to set up road blocking regulations either, so.
Yeah, I don't know if Ms. Saunders is present.
Yeah, on the other hand, I think that's an excellent way of doing it, because we can always send code enforcement out, ask a couple of questions, and they know if somebody's been there too long or not.
Right. If they've built a deck, which I've seen done, I have seen it done, again, we want to ride the code with some teeth, but we also don't want to take success away from a developer either.
Before you move on, the half-mile to the minimum width, is that half-mile from the drive, or half-mile from the property?
Uh-oh, whoops, I went too far. Enjoy that.
It's got to be that far, we're not going to have any of it off.
Yeah, yeah. That, Mr. Perkins is a-
That's the RV park we're talking about.
Good question.
Yeah, because it needs to be specified.
I'll clarify from my perspective on that, you don't drive to the property, you drive to the entranceway, and so it would be-
I think it just needs to be stated.
Okay.
So, no, I totally agree with the idea, but I just think it needs to be stated.
Let's make that adjustment.
Yeah.
Half-mile to entrance, is that how we-
Yeah, yeah, to the entrance, yeah.
Now, okay, here comes the sticky, sticky question. You know, elsewhere in the ordinance, we do have requirements for a number of entrances and accesses.
Either one, from an entrance.
Essentially whichever be closest to the parcel line, it has to be, yeah.
Yeah, just from an entrance, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay.
Okay, now I'm going to go one more. We're getting sticky.
Yes.
Not just an entrance, but the entrance they would use for them, because if you had a big parcel of land out there, and it went around three different curves, and you put in a gate up here and go, well, there's an entrance, and we're, it's a half-mile farther to the actual entrance.
How about this? Let me try this, Mr. Perkins.
They're not going to page that extra half-mile.
No, but-
Well, that might, that saves them development.
You're just saying.
Any entrance intended for public use?
Which will all be marked on the development plan, so.
That's true, yeah, we'll have that, we'll have that.
Any entrance intended for public use as designated by the development plan at time of application?
Public use, ongoing, everyday use.
Yeah, because it may not be the same at time of approval, yeah.
Designated for everyday use, I mean, because you could say, well, an emergency use is public use, right?
Elise, how do you feel about that language?
(inaudible).
I know you're scribbling.
Again, I think it's important, let's nail this language out, because to Ms. Singer's point, we don't want them to have to maybe meet that road width requirement for within a half-mile of their emergency exit.
Right.
But we do require that emergency exit for campsites above a certain size. And so it would be the-
Ongoing entrance, everyday entrance.
Yeah, the primary.
Primary entrance, maybe.
I like it. Do we, does the board like that?
Primary, yeah. I mean, I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
Elise, erase all that.
Very much so.
You need a whiteboard, Elise.
Maybe, get your wondering back to you.
Okay, where would you all like to go to next?
Anybody? I've got a question for you.
Sure.
Page seven, five C, while we're talking about traffic. RV campgrounds with greater than 50 sites shall be required to supply a traffic study as part of their development plan.
Okay.
Traffic studies drive me crazy anyway, as you know, we've talked about them the last several months, but it looks like to me, common sense, the traffic study's going to be different with RVs than just everyday traffic. Or am I wrong?
Yes, to your point, traffic from any different type of development is different.
But they have national standards for all of them.
Right, and there are. IT and/or the empowered engineers that go to school for probably way too long to do it, but let me at least explain the rationale behind this metric here. So typically, within the rest of our code, our development standards is anything that generates more than 100 peak hour trips in a day, whether that be AM or PM, requires a traffic study. Just like any temporary use, whether it be a hotel, et cetera, these things have check-in and check-out times. If you've got 50 sites, more than likely, some of them are turning over. Beyond that, most people tow their RVs, right? Or some people tow a vehicle behind. So with the number of 50 sites, to also include employees, or staff, things of that nature, it's pretty commonsensical that more than likely, in one of these rush periods, this development will cross that threshold. So it kind of brings it up to par with our similar standards elsewhere, that, you know, while it might not be explicitly 100 trips, the volume and intensity is there, both by the type of use, the type of vehicle, that sort of thing. Now, the traffic study also does, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The trips in and out are going to be slower with an RV than they are with a automobile.
Well, I think the big intent here is not necessarily the number of trips.
Okay.
It's to evaluate the existing level of service of the roadway and the intersections nearby within the scope of the study.
Okay.
So that can, that knowledge can speak to roadway improvements, whether it be striping, lane widening, turn lanes, things of that nature. It can also speak to signalization. You know, it could also say, this site absolutely does not work because nobody took into account what's going on six blocks away. In an instance where you have, you know, something closer to the interstate, you know, dare I say, Della Plain, et cetera, those areas, you know, get used to that word for tomorrow evening, but there are certain areas where the roadways, the roadways and the soil types and everything else may check the boxes, and they say, oh, man, you know, we're right by the interstate, we got a 25-foot wide road, you know, this land is obviously not suitable for farming, let's give it a shot. Well, you know, you're obviously going to be proposing larger-sized development. This context is important.
So, I agree, but, and so we just have to rely on those traffic engineers to know the difference between a RV park and a hotel.
When one of those comes in big enough, I'm calling in the day the cases get handed out, and Elise, our traffic pro's going to get it. So. Traffic study, man, you love them.
Pass it on down to Tosh.
Okay, yeah, you talk about cutting your teeth.
The rookie.
She did, hey, she did start off her first Board of Adjustment case recommending a denial. I thought that was great. Yeah, yeah.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Brett before we turn this over to the public? I have one more, but I know it's going to come up in the public discussion, so I'll just wait.
Well, would you like to pose it to facilitate said discussion?
Well, page two, applicability number two C.
Aha.
Only those lands with less than 50% prime farmlands and farmlands of statewide importance may be considered for use. Is there any other development or application that considers the prime farmland in an application? Mr. Fleming?
So I'll preface this by saying that this is a, this is a design standard, a design metric that's been with Scott County Planning and Zoning for like 30-plus years at this point. Obviously, our community values the preservation of these prime farmlands. With that said, the only other application where this type of metric is referenced is obviously within the A1R section, but then also within the SOLAR ordinance, that was recently passed. When did SOLAR go through?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-three. And so it is unique that that be a metric, but it's not unheard of.
Okay. I'm sure it will come up again tonight.
And that's 50% of the entire site.
Parcel as a whole, yes.
All right, that's all I have. Anybody else on the commission? Last chance, I'm sure you'll speak up again later on. Mr. Shirley, if you have nothing else, we can turn it over to the public.
That is what we're here for, so I will get out of the way.
Chairman, before we move on, just, the cats have put together some language, and I want to make sure this reflects the will of the board as it relates to that, improving the long road frontage. I heard maybe, you know, since we do require multiple entrances on some of these, you know, what if both, what if neither of those is emergency, what if one is, you know, they're both full-time? And so the language we have would be to modify Section GI to say, RV campground entrances must connect to a collector or arterial roads with a pavement width of at least 16 feet within a half-mile of any and all full-time public use entrances per the approved development plan.
I thought we said primary.
Well, so there's a circumstance where at an RV campground that is greater than 200 RV sites, we require them to have two full-time entrances.
Okay, so read that again. Can you read it again?
Aren't you also going to be having to improve the frontage of the property? So they're going to have that to begin with, and then the other half-mile, because basically, if you've got, I don't know, quarter-mile frontage, you've now got three-quarters of a mile on one of those. That, you're now borderlining just enormous. In other words, you're improving the frontage at a half-mile to that from the nearest entrance, and you've got a situation that far exceeds most of our roads already.
That's why we decided to read this out loud, catch this. So to be clear, right, we are not requiring off-site improvements. So for that half-mile, you know, that isn't on your frontage, you can leave that alone as long as it meets whatever that, you know, 17, 18, 18-foot width. The, if we like primary, we can stick with primary, and then that just means that you're measuring that half-mile from one entrance that the applicant gets to determine. And then we check that half-mile, and then yes, still along the frontage of their property, they're going to expand that to, I believe it's a 20-foot minimum with three-foot shoulders.
Because that's a different requirement.
Because that's a different requirement within this.
I think that's reasonable to say primary.
Okay, just primary.
Yeah.
We like that? Very good, we'll rewrite this.
And then do we want, before we open it up to the public, to talk about the language revision we talked about with the insurance?
Yeah, so that's the other one I have.
Oh, sorry, step ahead.
I like it. Prior to the operation of approved RV campground, the applicant shall provide the GSC, provide to the GSCPC proof of an adequate surety against damages or failure of the approved private sewer facility. And then such policy shall be reviewed every two years.
Policy or bond, or such surety?
Or just, yes.
Yeah, such security will be reviewed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Such security. And so we have replaced active insurance policy with adequate security, surety, I'll figure that one out, and then, instead of such policy, it becomes such surety.
Surety, whichever one is appropriate based off your Webster's.
Do we like that? Barring any input from the public?
Right.
Okay, very good.
All right, if you plan to speak tonight, would you please stand up, and Mr. Perkins will swear you in here?
Do you swear our firm statement should make tonight to be the truth to the best degree of information and belief? Thank you.
All right. No, I think that's for tomorrow night there. All right, does anyone like to go first there? You want me to flip a coin, or?
I'll be glad to start it.
All right.
We have several people that are going to speak tonight, and so if someone covers the same thing that you're going to say, if you would, just-
I'll be amazed, but perhaps they will be.
We'll keep going here.
Dick Murphy, Farmer Dick Murphy to you guys, and I live at 346 Mear Lane, we have Heronwood Farm. And Ms. Singer, I want to start out by answering the question you asked at the last meeting, so hopefully this won't count against my time. Because you asked a really good question about a traffic study. So not having an easy way to do a traffic study, I went to the trouble of doing, I won't call this a professional engineering version, but I- won't call this a professional engineering version, but I think it illuminates how much reasonable road frontage there is, access roads, to look at in the county. So please accept it in, in that vein. So what I looked at were all these primary, this is from comprehensive, this was taken right out of comprehensive plan. So it made sense to me that the collector, you know, the collectors and the arterial roads would probably be the best candidates for easy access for an RV park. So I started my study there. What I did was then, using Google Earth Pro, I actually went in and looked at how wide are these roads? And I found some surprises, and I'll show you a few of them in just a minute. But what I did was categorize those into three different classes, high, medium, and narrow. So if you look at wide, I defined wide to be 23 to 25 feet wide. So I've color-coded it, everything here that you see, and I'm sure you're familiar with many of these roads, all of those would be fine candidates, in my opinion, for RV park access. Now, there may be other things that disqualify them, but your question was specific to, can we have a, a study, a road study? So that's, that's all this is. And then I said, well, what about others? So medium, there's a lot of medium. Now, to me, when I first looked through this, I was considering 18 through 22 feet wide as medium. I now believe there's a problem with 18 feet, and I'll explain that to you in just a few minutes. But this would be the candidates that would be available, in my opinion, for access. Now, it's interesting, some of these roads, like Davis Road, for example, looks to the casual observer like it's throughout, it's a 21 to 22-foot road, but it's not. If you go about a mile away from Sadieville going east, there are points, when you get close to Harrison County, where it gets down to about 17 feet wide. So when I show you some numbers in terms of calculations, I did not include stretches where it gets down to be very small. So for example, if we look at narrow, I included that little section as narrow, and in my opinion, is not viable for an RV park. So now we've got a way to kind of visualize where could parks easily go. I'm not saying exclusively here, and I'm not saying that this is absolutely 100% correct. There may be some other wide roads out there that I didn't look at. But here's the thing, there is still a size and scale mismatch. It turns out some of these Class I RVs can be 10 and a half feet wide if you include the mirrors. Now legally, they can only be eight, the body can only be eight and a half feet wide, but many of them will have one-foot mirrors on either side. So if you have that situation, worst-case scenario, you've got two of these guys facing each other, 18-foot wide road, they're going to hit unless somebody moves off the road. And that can happen. So the question that I posed to myself was, what's the probability that two vehicles, two wide vehicles on an 18-foot road might meet each other? Well, it turns out, through statistics, you can answer that question by knowing, A, what's the AADT, B, what's the speed of the two vehicles, and C, what is the segment length, the road segment length? So armed with that, I did some calculations, and the average 19-foot, I mean, less than 19-foot road, the average less than 19-foot road in the county is about three miles. So the probability, the way you read this, the probability that on a three-mile segment, you will have two, oh, thank you, that you'll have a, two vehicles, two wide vehicles approach each other and have an encounter about, if you make that trip, if I'm driving one of these vehicles, and I make that trip 100 times, 30 times, I'm going to encounter another wide vehicle. That's without any RV traffic. Let's say you put 200 RVs on there, the probability goes from 30 all the way up to about 21. To me, that's a risk I would not be willing to impose. So I really think that 18 feet is not wide enough to start the chart for a couple of reasons. But if there's any math, folks, that's the math you go through, but that's beside the point. I live, I access my, my property on an 18-foot road. This is just the past year, on an 18-foot road with no shoulders. It happens all the time. Vehicles that are coming together, Nicole knows the person that was, Nicole's one of my neighbors, knows the person who rent here, it was someone who works for her. And they get run out of the road by wide vehicles. Because there's semis coming and going, well, semis are also about 10 and a half feet. It just so happened, I followed one on Ironworks on the way here. Ironworks is about 19 feet, two, and that was a tow truck. So the point is, it's dangerous to have consideration of 18-foot roads, and I think unnecessary, and I'll show you why. My suggestion for improvement is a density matrix that looks like this, 19 feet as a minimum. And I'll give you two examples of why I think that's generous in and of itself. One is there's an existing distillery ordinance that has a 20-foot requirement plus three-foot shoulders on it. That's in place now. Also, the RV ordinance that was displaced from last year, it had a 20-foot requirement with three feet shoulders on it. So I'm not, I'm not advocating for 20 feet, but I'm definitely advocating for 19 feet as the minimum. Now, to further that a little bit more, if you take out the 18-feet roads, this is what I studied. We all know the James Kinne Way, Pans Depot, Dunkirk Road, you know it by name or by highway route number. This is the width, the length that I studied. There's over 117 miles of road that meet that classification. Now, is all of that viable? Probably not because of farmland, prime farmland. But a subset of that still is pretty doggone good. So I think it's reasonable to, to answer your other question, which was, have we written an ordinance that nobody can beat? And the answer is no. If you're basing it on, I mean, there may be other things that I missed, but if you're basing it on road access, the answer is no. Any questions on, on that? So I've got three asks of suggested improvements. This is what it would look like, by the way, if we.
But not considering the prime farmland requirement or anything else?
Exactly.
Just the road.
Just the road, just the road. So I've got two more asks. One is for, well, that was just a point that I made on the pre-existing ordinances, sweep analysis, where did my question, where'd it go? Sorry. There, add the following ordinance, this might not be necessary because of something.
Can that get any bigger?
We can't read it here.
Yeah, I can't read it.
Well, I can read it.
I didn't know if you could like do the view like magnified.
I don't have, I don't have bigger as an option. There's, there's two. Add the following ordinance to the felony. Prior to operation.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
We should, four minutes.
You can go, yeah, that's a good point, thank you.
You can throw one of them.
Yeah. This is just something that's in the, in an existing ordinance. I noticed item five on page six says, all applications for all RV campgrounds shall adhere to all requirements and procedures set forth in subdivision and development regulations. So this might be redundant, but I'd just like to have an assurance if it, if it is redundant. This comes out of, or a version of this comes out of the existing subdivision regulations. So I'm suggesting that in the private sewer section of the RV ordinance, we say something to the effect of, prior to operation of an approved RV campground, the applicant shall provide to GSCPC a letter stating the name of the state-certified operator who will operate the system. That's already in subdivision language. I think it needs to be in the RV ordinance unless somebody tells me it's already adopted because of this.
Because of the subdivision ordinance?
Exactly. Charlie, is that, does that make sense?
I had to look at it, I couldn't answer that.
So if, if this doesn't incorporate it, I think we should do something like that. The next one is, and there actually is another answer to your question, Mr. Mifflin. A1S specifically calls out prime farmland also. And in it, it says the proposed storage sites must contain no prime farmland. So my suggestion is, in addition to the 50% criteria, add the proposed RV sites, plural, must contain no prime farmland. And simply stated, that would mean that, and I told you before, that we can, I can imagine people gaming the 50%. If I've got 100 acres, 40, 50-50, let's say, 50 prime, 50 not, I could easily say, all right, I'm going to zone five acres, build a house on it. Now I've got 45 acres of prime farmland and 50 acres of non-prime, I'm good to go. But well, that kind of defeats the whole purpose of putting prime farmland in there. So my suggestion would say, that's fine, yeah, you can have an RV park there, but you can't put RVs on the 45 acres. You've got to put it on the 50 acres, simple as that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. All right, who would like to step up next?
I hate speaking in front of people. So my name is Nicole Hammond, and I am Dick's neighbor. I'm at 175 Rocky Waters Way. Don't know if you're familiar with that location at all. But I have a horse farm business there. I board and breed mares. And I would like you to take into consideration, and I know you're not supposed to make this personal, but it very much goes that there should be, I think, more of a buffer or a setback to agricultural-like horse farms, that, you know, the lighting, the, the sound really does affect someone's business if they have, you know, they're trying to run a horse farm next to an RV park. And I think that, and I don't know how you would word that exactly, I know there is some stuff in there in regards to that, but 50 feet is not very far, especially if you have mares, foals, you know, with a fence line. And so I would just ask you to sort of reconsider what you think is an appropriate buffer, especially the lighting. You know, lighting should not interfere with the animals, and I think also, you know, sound. So I am in a, in a spot where the elk horn runs around me, and everything is amplified because it's all down in a ravine. And so I can hear people talking near Dick's actual farm, because it, it amplifies so much. And so I would just ask you to also consider, you know, sound, and maybe putting up some barriers for sound if you're, you know, putting in an RV park, because that is going to affect neighborhoods, you know, and all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of what I had to say.
Thank you very much.
My name is Gerald Icorn. I live at the same address, and I would like to have a little bit of clarification, I think. And that is, from my understanding, the, the entrance, and I assume that also covers exits, would have to be a half mile from a material or collector road. But it, certain properties, like the one that my partner was talking about, border agricultural land that have an easement, because some of this land has been divided up, as you know, over the, over generations, and so the parcels have easements through each other, and these easements are hundreds of years old, 150 years, 100 years, and they're not written with the idea of track, commercial traffic. They are, as you know, the ones that are lawyers of you, they are extremely vague. You know, they basically just permit ingress and egress to the property that is either landlocked or precluded from, from entry through other means. And my concern is that if you build an RV park and you define only the entrance and exit points, so the emergency exit or entrance and the, the second one, but you don't specify what is happening to easements that go through neighboring farms, then a developer can easily come by and say, okay, you know, we're not using this as the main entrance and exit for, or the secondary even, but we use it still as a means to, to get to, to our property. So for 100 years, this easement has only been used for harvesting, maybe twice a year, something like this. And all of a sudden, because there's no provision in this ordinance, if you rezone this for an RV park, the easement automatically, because of the wording of the easement, becomes another access point for the RV park that does not have to be labeled emergency or secondary, whatever, but it can be used, for example, for construction, because that has nothing to do directly with the operation of the RV park. So my concern here is that if something like that happens, the burden now falls on the, on the, on the owner of the property through which the easement runs, like for example, a farmer. Can be tobacco cattle, or can be a horse farm. And the developer can say, okay, you know, now that I'm not using this for, for a main or secondary entrance, I'm still using it now, but the, the character of the easement changes. And that is not, I think, considered at all in this, in this proposal for the ordinance. So my suggestion would be that if there is an easement through another property, that, that easement has to be disclosed, and if it is used in any capacity for the RV park, that there has to be an understanding that is legally binding between the owner of the property the easement runs through and the person that wants to build the RV park, that the easement can, can be used legally the way the, the RV park owner wants to use it. Because otherwise, what happens is that the RV park owner can say, okay, the easement permits me that use, because it's basically like free use, and then you have a lawsuit. And I think ordinances should not be conceived in the way that they actually increase the likelihood of a lawsuit. They should minimize that risk, because otherwise you don't need any regulations. So that's, I think, my concern with, with, with how it's written now, because easements are considered in the subdivision ordinance. But there, as far as I understand this, a commercial easement is understood as a commercial easement that is already established, and not as a, as an easement that becomes a commercial easement because of the establishment of a commercial site. There, the regulations are about how the width of the easement, easement has to look like, what the pavement has to look like, and all of these kind of things are covered. But what's not covered is that you, that you change the character of an easement by, through rezoning. And, and so I would ask you to consider that, because that's not a hypothetical. This is a real case. So the proposed RV park actually has an easement through a horse farm, and that... So the proposed RV park actually has an easement through a horse farm, and that, and it has, and it's landlocked otherwise, the proposal has been withdrawn, but that RV park would need two entrances as exits. And the people that tried to develop that RV park actually approached the owner of the property that has the, that basically has the easement running through for emergency exit, which would essentially destroy the operation of a horse farm that basically breeds mares and foals.
Charlie, let me interrupt you just a second here.
Sure.
And refer back to Charlie. So, and he may have already answered your question. So an easement going through, I mean, it's, if it's been there forever, what steps need to be taken?
Well, first off, if it's been there forever, it's probably very informal.
Yes.
Just to clarify, what the situation is, they own the farm that joins what Midway Street. Yeah, they've got an easement that goes through their farm from the other side of the creek. It's been there for two, and the reason I know that, I did appraisal a few years ago. So yes, they've got an easement there, but his concern is, okay, can that farm easement be expanded into something else? And that's another question. I want to be sure you all understand.
No, it's actually not, it's actually not a question, because the easement is written in a deed, okay? It's written in a deed, and it's written in a way that basically is completely open, in a way that it says, you know, you have to have free access for the owner of the property because, to inspect the property. So this is, this is like, this is, it's written in a form that guarantees the owner of the property to access his or her property at liberty to inspect the thing. So this is not something, this is from the language, does allow, of course, commercial access, unless you go to court and you start doing this. The problem with this kind of thing is, 150 years ago, nobody was thinking about an RV park with 200 RVs going in and out. You know, that didn't exist. But that is not, the problem here that I'm seeing here is that I, this is not an isolated case. Easements like this are all over the place here, because large areas that were farmed have been subdivided and they have these easements. And so if this was a singular, like, really completely arcane case, exotic, I would say, okay, fine, this is so special, but it is not. These old deeds and these very unspecific and broad easements are very common, as you know. And therefore, the thing to say, okay, you don't want to have the main exit and the main entrance, because, you know, it's, the easement is longer, is about a mile long, so therefore it doesn't really, you cannot really finagle that. But you can still say, okay, there's nothing in the ordinance that forbids the owner of the property with the RV park to use this as an informal way, for example, to use construction or delivery or something like that, that is not a secondary or a primary entrance. And the thing is, the idea that you say, okay, the internal roads have to be constructed at a certain kind of thing, does not really apply to the easement. Even if you apply it to the easement, the developer can say, fine, I built a 20-foot wide road with a three-foot shoulder. It may cost me like $200,000, but it's better than a million dollars for a bridge. And I think the people that are lawyers here know that what you do when you sit in front of a problem and you want to solve it, you look for loopholes. And that's what I do also. And this is for me a large kind of loophole, because of the fact that if you don't close it, then you potentially permit a business that doesn't exist to ruin another business that has existed for a long period of time. Because the other provision that helps you is the one that goes about that the impact on the neighborhood, that is another article, I think it's, what is it, Section 4E6 or something like this. The problem is, there, it's, the burden of proof is on the injured party.
Charlie, just saying, you're getting on legal terms here, and
Charlie, can you speak to the easement?
Just let me throw one thing in. I can't imagine we're going to ever approve a project that uses a 100-year-old easement through somebody else's property unless that other property owner approves it.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt. Sorry to interrupt. I have been doing this long enough, what I have been doing, long enough to see that when people say things like this, they will happen for sure.
Okay, just.
So if you, if you don't, you're a lawyer, so you know, if you don't put this in writing so that it is, if you close all of the loopholes, it will happen.
Charlie, you keep saying this, and what we are talking about here is an ordinance for the whole county.
Exactly.
You're talking about a specific
I don't.
Development close to your property, and that will be addressed if, in fact, it ever comes before us.
No, I
We are not talking about needing that type of language in every development throughout the county. That's a specific development.
I understand what you're saying, but I disagree with you respectfully.
Okay.
Because of the fact that, as I said before
We're not going to go on all night long talking about this easement when Mr. Perkins has already said that
Nobody will approve it.
That it wouldn't be approved. I can sit up here and say
So are we on record for that? Are we on, are we on record for that?
Pardon?
Are we on record for this kind of, for this information?
I need to go on record saying that if it came before me and there was an easement through there, I wouldn't approve it.
No, that
Why would I hurt somebody else's operation for somebody else? I mean, it's
Charlie, how about I suggest one thing? Let's put it in there, that if there's an easement proposed to be used, the owner of the original property as well as the developer, we've got to have everybody's approval.
Yes, exactly.
There you go.
That's all I was asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, Section GI, where we were just a little bit ago, and we've already modified this once to include language related to primary entrances. What I would recommend is a second sentence, and again, this is just my first attempt at this, but something to the effect of, these connections cannot be made through easements transversing adjacent properties, or something to that effect.
Unless
Unless approved by
Approved by both parties.
Approved by both parties.
Yeah.
Or something to that effect.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other consideration, as well as it pertains to suitability. A1R does not exist naturally, the zone in which this use would be allowable. So anybody that seeks to create this use is 99.999% more than likely going to have to seek to rezone a property. Through that process, we follow state language as well as our comprehensive plan, you know, future land use map, et cetera. Part of the rezoning process is establishing whether or not a property is appropriate for the use. Transportation networks and access and things of that nature all do come into play. Each parcel is judged indiscriminately on its own circumstances. So that's another facet of the process there, where presumably that would be addressed. And again, Mr. Perkins kind of alluded to it, anytime that we're in possession of a plat, of a development, and to address the gentleman's kind of statement, some of these properties have been around forever. Maybe they're not on a plat, but they're on a deed. When a development plan comes before us, it would have to stipulate, just like any legal document, here's the easement that exists, these are the owners that are required to maintain it and have use of it. Presumably, any user that has rights to it would have to be involved
Any owner.
In a consent.
Any owner.
Yes.
Period.
Period. They would have to consent to, to either renegotiate the maintenance and use agreement or not. So I don't disagree. I think, I think it's an excellent question. I don't think it's an uncommon circumstance in the areas, county at large. It's fair to include some language, but I also just wanted to remind everybody that we have two and three different layers of review that presumably would say, probably not a great idea.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? David?
My name's David Rogers. I live at 4249 Ironworks Road, very close to the Midway Road there, to end of Midway on Ironworks, turn left near my driveway. So I apologize for not being with in a lot of these meetings. I travel a lot, and, but I've kept up to in with David, some of the guys on all of this. And just a couple of quick questions, it won't take but a few moments. Several years ago, on South Elkhorn, there was a major dump, if you would, spill, that took place on South Elkhorn and killed all the habitat and fish in there. Y'all may remember that, but it's easy to find if you need it. So we were talking about insurance and that sort of thing. Most likely, sometime over the next few years, I'm afraid that the sewer operation will maybe be dumped accidentally spills into the Elkhorn, so maybe highlighting insurance purposes, it's such a beautiful setting down through there. And I'm a fisherman, we enjoy the outdoors, but I would keep in note that one spill can wipe that entire process of wildlife and fish out of there. Just a minor note. Second of all, again, on Ironworks Road, the main drive, I don't think anybody's done a study about the horse park out there where there is an RV. A lot of people visit that. They'll be coming down Ironworks, I think, a lot instead of the interstate, which is most likely, but I think still some will come down the main part of Ironworks and turn left on the Midway Road. And that road is extremely narrow. I've lived there for 35 years, were continuously having wrecks. I did the survey and went and got some numbers. There's been nine wrecks on the Ironworks Road from 460 to 62 just this year. Most of them are happening there at Sorg's Road, but the road has very little shoulder on the sides. And I agree with these RVs pass each other, most likely it's going to be an issue. I think it will be a serious issue. And then those two, quite the quick things, ATVs, most of these guys who are running these big RVs have a four-wheel little unit that runs with them. Are they going to have access, I guess, to the roads running up and down property lines? Nothing we can do about that, but I wanted to state for the record that it is a dangerous road. We have the bicyclers who can come up and down the road, there's been some killed there on the road, but something to think about is that travel with those ATVs. And then secondly, or last thing, would be noise. Again, I bought this five-acre tract, now I have 15 acres there, hoping to have a retirement home back there. I'd be able to put a pool in and a gazebo and work a lot, and I'm thinking about retirement years, we're going to sit back and we're going to enjoy solitarity and peace. I'm not sure. Fourth of July fireworks and maybe other things. And again, I apologize, maybe all of these things have been touched on. I haven't had an opportunity to speak my little piece, but let the record show that I don't think this is an ideal spot for the RV park. Okay? Any questions towards me?
No, David, I would just like to say, we're not here to discuss an RV park at all tonight.
Well, I wanted to
We're here to discuss an ordinance
Yes, sir.
Establishing that.
I realize that.
And so whether one comes out there at Midway or not
Yeah, I understand
Is not what we're here for tonight.
I understand that, sir.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I speak to just one question?
Yes, sir.
So I am here within the regulations as it pertains to sanitary systems. Number four here does state that any facility must be outside the 100-year floodplain. Beyond that, it shall be at least two feet in elevation above said floodplain area, and at least 25 feet from the boundary of any repairium buffer. Repairium buffers generally extend beyond shorelines, et cetera. The question was posed by Mr. Perkins during one of our legal reviews of, well, what happens when they're outside the floodplain and that current condition is not two feet above? It's going to have to be. I mean, through any development, we receive grading plans, and that will have to be demonstrated and installed in such a way as the ordinance is currently written.
So you're just saying, though, it can be graded for that point?
Yes.
It's not just a natural landscape, you've got to be at that
It'd be a character development. Yes, sir.
Hi there. I'm the other Dick Murphy, the attorney Dick Murphy. And unfortunately, all Dick Murphys don't feel the same way on everything here. So I sent you all a memo, it was in your packet, I'm sure you read it. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but we have a major philosophical problem with the ordinance, and that is that this is, the ordinance the way it is, is, I counted up probably at least 35 requirements you have to meet before you can have a RV park anyway. If you meet this, if you don't meet this, you can't do it. If you don't meet this, you can't do it. If you don't meet this, you can't do it. If you miss one of the 35, you get turned down. An example of that is the
This is the second week in a row.
The soils issue you had. Just a blanket statement, if it's shown on somebody's map as more than 50% prime soil, doesn't even let you consider things like, is the topography really suitable for farming? Are you next to an industrial park? Are you right near the interstate? That sort of thing. But what that does, and what this ordinance does overall, is it takes away all your discretion in granting a zone change. Any RV park that comes before you will require a zone change, or some of the smaller ones may require a conditional use permit. Now, under law, all zone changes and all conditional use permits are discretionary with you all or the Board of Adjustment and the Fiscal Court. They're discretionary items. You all had the ordinance a couple months ago about compliance with House Bill 443, that talked about ministerial items, that plats have to be ministerial, that is, you check off all the boxes, have to approve. Well, the law is a lot different for zone changes. That's you all have discretion on zone changes. You're here because you have the wisdom to look at all the issues and look on a case-by-case basis and see whether a zone change, which would be required for an RV park, should be granted for this particular location. But what we have here is just a big, long, negative set of things, can't do it if you don't do this, can't do it if you don't do that. So as I said, we missed one of the 35 criteria, we're out of it. What we feel the ordinance should be is make it discretionary. Put the, and we don't have any problem with considering the subjects that are put in this ordinance. We don't have any problem with considering agricultural land, considering the adequacy and availability of sewage, and considering the adequacy and availability of water service, and considering the buffering that's proposed. Now, one thing that isn't mentioned in there, you ought to proximity to the interstate highway. Everybody complains about RVs driving on county roads. Well, closer you are to the interstate highway, the less they'll be driving on county roads. Entrance features. Entrance feature that keeps RVs off out of the road when they're checking in or exiting or entering. Impact on the tourism industry. Length of stay of guests, and the adequacy of connection to public roads and availability of emergency entrances. But those are things that you ought to consider. And then your job, and legally your job, is to weigh all those things and say, is this zone change suitable in this location? There's going to be pluses and minuses with every application that comes before you. And this one just says, oh, we got, I stopped counting at 35, I think there's more like 45 or 50 things, but if you don't meet one of these planning commission, you can't exercise your discretion, it's just, just out before you start. I mean, start with the soils thing, as planning staff said, that alone eliminates half the county, and you've got 34 other things going to eliminate this, and this, and this, and this, and this. The, the item about easements, I know that's a private issue, and I'd just caution you that easements are interpreted by courts, and I'd ask you whether you want to get in the business of taking away property rights. Courts declare property rights, but don't get in the business of taking away property rights. But overall, we'd ask you to, to pass a discretionary ordinance here that gives the authority to you, which is where it belongs, because every site is different. Every site can't meet every requirement there, and we're very concerned because we, we're convinced no RV park will ever get approved under this ordinance. It's almost an impossibility. We're asking you to vote against this ordinance We're asking you to vote against this ordinance here. If you're for it, might as well just, if you're for this ordinance, might as well just be straightforward and pass an ordinance saying there will, RV parks are not allowed. No new RV parks are allowed, because that's what it's going to amount to if you pass this ordinance. We thank you very much. We have some experience in dealing with RV parks, and, and as I said, every, every site is different. All I'm asking you to do is to take the authority that you were given by law to exercise that discretion. It's supposed to be discretionary. It's not supposed to be, you're out, you're out, you're out, you're out, you're out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roy?
Roy Cornet. I guess I've been through this thing since beginning. I tend to agree with Mr. Murphy about the way we've got it written, saying not going to be RV parks, but the specific part that bothers me, and it got talked about initially, meaning that, the one meeting I think I missed, and I'm talking about the 50-50 land thing, which rules out anything south of Delplane Road, salt type wise. And I got to think about it, I just really think that's overreaching. And that was the reason I wanted to be on this committee, because I wanted this order not to go too far, where we were precluding anything else in the county. But that land, soil type thing, just for example, Bob Conley was here a while ago. I think he talked to Judge Cuthbert about it, but you know, Bob Conley's had two or three things approach him over the years. He's right on I-64 and Paines Depot Road, for those who don't know, the big cattle operation. The way this is written, there can't be a campground of any consequence right there on the interstate on Paines Depot Road and I-64. Period, because of that soil thing. And I just think that's going too far. I realize we want to protect our soils and stuff, but folks, we're talking about right on the interstate. Just to give you an example, three years ago maybe, the soccer complex that's now in Lexington over on Richmond Road, they talked to us in Scott County about being out there on Bob Conley's property. They were going to include a campground and soccer complex. It didn't happen, they wound up Richmond Road, but it was on the table. And I just, to draw a line and say nothing south of Delplane Road, I just think is going too far, simply on the soil thing.
Thank you, Roy.
Is there, I know we talked about another ordinance. Does it, which ordinance was that that gives such a specific requirement of the-
So it's both solar and as-
A1, sorry.
We have the A1 salvage ordinance that also does not allow for basically salvage yards, no yards and private parcels.
But more broadly than that, comprehensive plan clearly says prime farmland is to be protected.
Right. I'm not saying that the ordinance shouldn't say it to be protected. I guess I'm questioning, should it have such a hard line? That's my question.
On things like this, that comes before whoever's in here in these seats at the time, are they still giving the discretion that they can, can we weigh things?
Override it?
Yeah. So just because it says-
Like something right next to the interstate, that makes sense.
No, if there's a position in the ordinance that says you can't put it there, then we can't put it there.
So it's two different-
There is no weighing of factors at that point. That's a provision, so we can't, we can't.
If I, right now, if the A1 or section, there's only ordinance, at least it would be possible to plug that in. Okay. There is language that exists with a generic A1R section that prohibits these uses from taking place in areas where supply soils are prevalent. So prevalent is the current ordinance in place. Now, that applies to all of the uses associated to the A1 line. So tonight, we're just trying to caution that out. And so at zone change time, that would be the language that would, that would come to you, and that's where that discretion could be made. What is prevalent? I don't believe there's a legal definition for prevalent, but I, there's clearly-
And it would be the discretion to say, gosh, this is right next to the interstate and whatever the case is.
But you're going to have to make that fine here.
Right.
Okay?
Why does this need to say 50% if-
Because prevalent, it does open that up.
Right, right.
And again, in conversation with the community, in conversations with the idea to preserve prime farmland, staff has been persuaded that that is the most clear and direct way to help preserve those prime farmlands is by preventing this agricultural recreational use from taking place in those lands that are best suited for prime agricultural production.
But it could rule out some places that it makes perfect sense for, too, with such a hard line of 50%.
Well, so this is where that becomes the discretion board here tonight, to figure out what language does suit the needs of the community. And so staff has proposed 50%. Staff believes that that is the best way to accomplish that goal. However, if this body believes in a lesser percentage or a greater percentage-
Or no percentage at all.
Or no percentage at all, that, that is, that is where discretion takes place. I do also want to clarify, in terms of, I want to clarify that this is not a one-step process, that somebody who is pursuing this type of use would be required to go through that zone change process, which does have great discretion for, for the body to consider. But after that, we do have these specific development regulations, which should be applied ministerially. And that is where and why staff has created these specific standards. If staff is the one who has to review the development plan that would be enacting this use, we do need clear standards to hold it up against. So discretion is exercised at time of zone change. Discretion should not be exercised at time of development plan.
Right. But it would prevent anybody from coming for a zone change on a property that didn't meet the 50%, so it would never get to develop.
It would, it would be, as it's written, not advised.
Which then removes discretion of the case that Mr. Cornet was talking about.
So again, what percentage does this body feel is appropriate, or is that percentage needed? Again, this is a holdover. That prevalent language is more than 30 years old at this point. It's been around a long time. That was a decision that was made then. If this body believes it's a good time to change that decision, if this body believes it's something to entertain, that is, again, a discretionary call. That would then be taken up by Fiscal Court as well.
I just feel like there needs to be some flexibility to consider, again, I'm going back to Mr. Cornet, specific example, things like that, right?
If we're bouncing stuff off each other, the other way that you could achieve this kind of intent is Farmer Murphy, and I really wish I had a better way. I'd made mention that potentially instead you review it and you just say, no RV site can be in an area of prime farmland. And so in, in theory, right, you could remove that 50%. And I know Farmer Murphy would like for them to both be there. I don't want to misrepresent what he brought to you. But you could theoretically remove that 50% requirement and instead substitute in that the campsite can't be on whatever that specific location is. And so if you had a property that was even 75% prime farmland, but they said, we're going to only locate our RV use on that extra 25%, whereas the current way it's written, that would not be allowed because the parcel as a whole is greater than 50%. By locating the development specifically on that acreage that is not prime farmland, that could potentially be achieved. You would still, of course, the goal is to preserve that prime farmland, you would just be approaching it from a different perspective.
I think the challenge would be then that prime farmland isn't as easily usable then for agriculture now that it's next to an RV park. So I'm not sure it solves anything besides checking a box that makes somebody feel better.
Well, the, the other thing that, that you should also consider in that, too, is obviously a, a RV park is more than just the sites. There are the improvements necessary to support that. You know, we are not going to create something here tonight that makes everybody happy. I would, again, I would lean onto comprehensive plan that, again, clarifies the importance of that preservation of prime soils, prime farmlands. But if this board wants more discretion at time of zone change and more flexibility at time of development plan, I would encourage, instead of staff discussion, discussion amongst the board, so that you guys can find consensus between yourselves. Elise, do me a favor. So this, again, is the existing language that's in the A1R section that says, an A1R zone-only agricultural recreational use is as defined under the following conditions. And so this is condition of zone change. Prime soils or soils of statewide importance shall be prevalent or shall not be prevalent in the development. And so that is the language that was then further clarified in this specific use regulation.
Yeah, I mean, I do think if it truly is, Mr. Cornet's questioning your, what you told us, but if it eliminates everything south of Delplane-
It does.
That's absurd, in my opinion.
It, so if, if we had it mapped, I think that was circulated earlier on in this process, but yes.
I mean, that's setting out an ordinance that-
There are some pockets-
Eliminates RV parks.
I want to say, what is the name, far west of the county.
I would, I would take the opposite position.
Monterey.
Encourages development in areas that don't currently have a lot of viable business opportunities. So you're really encouraging development elsewhere.
But it's also, in many cases, encouraging it in areas where there aren't necessarily accessible roads. We're talking about interstate access, right?
What I showed you, they're there.
What, how many, y'all talk to the public, I bet there are many public things. What does the public say about viable farmland? What do they want to preserve?
So the language I've heard is prime soils, but also soils of statewide importance.
Yeah. That's, that's what the public's made pretty clear, what they would like to see in this.
Excepting several, I've had, I've talked to everybody.
Yep.
But I would say the predominant opinion that I've heard lays on that. Now, predominant doesn't mean right, necessarily.
Nope, it does not.
But it, I just want to accurately represent the conversations of, yeah.
And it does seem if it gives us some flex, some flexibility to consider one that might be in 50, more than 50% prime farmland, but it makes sense because of interstate access or whatever the other factors might be versus this ard, nope, line in the sand, ditch it out. Yeah. It seems so weird.
Yeah, but this is a double-edged sword, guys. This is, we're on one hand, we're wanting to save farmland, which I agree with 100%. On the other, you're making an ordinance for an RV park. As a camper myself, a guy that camps, I don't want to be on a campsite straight up and down. So in order to have that, that's, you're going to be-
You're going to have to go beyond the 50%.
You're going to be into some of the good farmland. Just like Bob Conley's farm over there that Mr. Cornet was talking about. Man, that's prime. That's, that's one of the best-
That's a sin, right?
Yeah, that's one of the best farms in the county. But if he chooses to do that, and he wants to put it on a RV park there, that is probably the best location in the county, in my personal opinion.
Both for farming and for RVs.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So how do you work that, to do that, to where it satisfies public, it satisfies the farm guys who wants to save the land? So how do you do that?
Percentage of prime farmland should be given significant consideration. I know that's still fluff, and that's not right, which obviously makes it-
Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking now, just a minute. I think that obviously makes it, I would love to sit here and say clear cut, because that makes our job easy, right? Everything's clear cut, no discretion. But I do think that limits us to such a degree that it eliminates things that do make sense, because I'm not a camper, but I take your word for it. You don't want to, you're not going to camp your RV on a hill going up and down like this, right? Well, when you go anything Delplane north, that's what you get.
That's what you get.
Right?
If I, if I may.
Sure.
So Holden hit on the concept of discretion versus ministerial, et cetera. I'm going to throw a wrench in here. To your point, Ms. Singer, some language is fluff. Now, the state has mandated recently that any standard within our code that could be potential subject to a ministerial review has got to be objective. That being said, what that means in this instance, when it pertains to the composition of soils in a parcel, it's either all, nothing, or a very specific metric. We as staff are not allowed now by the state to make discretionary subjective calls upon review. If an application does not request a variance, we have to be empowered by the code that you all give us to make those ministerial decisions in a defined manner. So that is going to be the difficulty you all face as you have this discussion, is it's an all, nothing, or very specific somewhere in between.
Even within the zoning ordinance?
Yes. Any, any developmental standard that we review against has to be used objectively.
So again, just, and I, I want to throw this to you guys, and I fully believe that we can find a solution to this here tonight. But we are talking about impacting two different sections of code. One is in that, that addendum that you were handed, section 2.5, 2.5.14, agricultural recreational projects. That first line is, number one, prime soils or soils of statewide importance shall not be prevalent in the development. That is the discretionary call that's made at zone change. So for purposes of consideration, that word prevalent is doing some heavy lifting right now. If you think that you can clarify that to meet the intention of this board and give the applicant surety of what you're looking at, when and if a zone change comes before you, that would be beneficial. Because we do want the development community to know what this expected standards are and to know whether or not they should even propose something. Past that, when we get into the development regulation, that specific one which we've been going through here tonight, only those lands with less than 50% farmland or farmland of statewide importance may be considered for this use, we've got to have either no number or a specific number for that. Right now, it's, it's that 50-50 line. You could press that up to 75, but frankly, south of Delplane, it's not going to matter.
No, it don't matter.
There, most of those are, are so high up in that percentage, you know, that's just, it's good soils.
Yeah.
And so it, I think it would be difficult to, to pick a number that is, is any more than lip service, because if, Elise, I think you found that map.
She's got both laptops going, poor thing.
She's a power user over there.
Oh, gosh. It's a very ridiculous, as long as I will say.
But once you get past that line-
It drops off precipitously. It's nothing.
It literally, it's a flat line. And south of it, you've got statewide importance, you've got prime soils. Above it, you don't have those things. You've got Eden Shale, you've got all sorts of stuff like that. It's night and day. So we could sit here and talk about discretion, but when you look at that map-
Yeah, you're making the decision.
There's not going to be any discretion. If, if you've got any prime soils prohibited, that line's going to knock you out. And just like you were talking about the Conley farm, it's 100%.
And that's an area that you would think would be targeted in terms of proximity to the interstate, right?
Well, you would. Also, Scott County's got a ton of interstate. You know, unlike some places where it kisses off and keeps going, no, we've got all kinds of interstate here.
But also the further north you go, the less roads that are going to meet the width capacities that we're talking about here.
That is also true.
So you're putting it in this little, right?
Double-edged sword.
I just realized, well, I have a federal farmer, so I should have to farm north of Delplane.
Yeah. That's exactly.
Because I disagree, you have to have a number in there. You can consider a zone change, you can consider traffic studies, you can consider the topography of the land, you can consider a lot of different factors, and there's not numbers on there. And that's because it's discretionary with you. I mean, soils is another thing that's discretionary with you when you grant a zone change. That's what you're looking at. You can't put a number on any, any, every zone, and that's why zone changes are discretionary with you. And once we get through with, with a plan, with that you see as part of the zone change, state law says those plans have to be followed. So the developer has to follow what they show you on those plans.
So after receiving a letter from Mr. Murphy, I talked with Mr. Perkins this afternoon about some of these things, and, and he brought up, we have two things here tonight that should be separated. One, we're talking about is zoning ordinance, and one, we're talking about development regulations. And can they be approved together, or do they need to be separated?
I've been thinking about this a lot since you and I talked. And it, I mean, I'm really in a difficult spot, because I totally agree with Dick, not Farmer, well, actually, I totally agree with Farmer Dick, too, but, but with Attorney Dick, because there is a lot of discretion in zone changes, there's not on development plans. We are supposed to have checked, checked boxes on that. The problem we have in this situation, and, well, let me first repeat quickly what Charlie and I talked about. Some of these things are development plan-type issues. Some of these are strictly zone-type. But the problem we have here is the strong desire to protect farmlands, a finite number of acres of- of acres of farmlands. We've got this incredibly distinct line that runs halfway up the county, beyond which there aren't none, and below which there's almost nothing but. You've got all these other considerations, but if you take those two things out, because we want to protect one period, well, by the time we do that, if we look at these things as Dick, the attorney says, at zone change, these things are not very easily changed or channeled into, well, let's see how this weighs out. As David said, that's the best farmland we've got. Yes, by the interstate, are we going to give up a couple hundred acres of the best we've got, because it'd be nice to have an RV park? Personally, I can't imagine that. On the other hand, by the interstate's the best place for these things. On the other hand, who wants to sit in an RV park looking at the damned interstate and, you know, and all the development? It'd be kind of nice to look at some wild stuff, I would think. I wouldn't know, I've never been in one.
That's the market turn, right?
But, but I would think so. So, you could put all these things into a zone change, but our peculiar circumstances, I can't imagine a whole lot of these things being approved, other than where the soils aren't any count for agriculture. That's why, yes, I agree, it ought to go in development plan considerations, zone, I think it's going to break pretty much the same way either way. Because I can't imagine if somebody comes in here with great farmland down south, oh yeah, but we got an interstate, we're going to look at all these things for that zone change, just like we would if they were listed in here. On the other hand, if we cut them apart and put those things on the checklist, well, this staff doesn't have any discretion at all, because it's in the checklist. Oh, you got to have this, you got to have this. Except, of course, Farmer Murphy says we've got quite a bit of land, or roadways out there that could qualify. This is a particularly difficult problem, because our county situation is very specific in a lot of these categories. You know, if we had a little bit of Eden Shale and whatnot, just a little corner, no big deal. We don't. I mean, the lot, literally, it's, it's just fifty percent, there it goes, up north. And again, I'm saying it's Rogers Gap, not Dela Plain, but maybe it tapers a little bit in that, you know, three quarters of a mile and a quarter. Anyway, that's why this is so difficult. We could put some of these things, well, we really can't. I mean, we really can't. If we give this thing an, an A1R classification, well, I mean, number one, we have a zone change, it doesn't work because of all these considerations at, at, at the checkbox level.
That nobody can quote about.
If we've got zoned property, which doesn't do us any good either. So that's why, I totally agree with him, but I don't think that's feasible, even though that's the way it's ninety percent or higher, the way it's done.
That was the most lawyerly non-answer I've ever heard you give.
Well, and I've been thinking about this for two or three hours, trying to make it a decent answer, and this is, this is the best I've been able to come up with. This is.
Sorry, I was enjoying all of it, all of it, I agree with it.
From another attorney.
Actually, I get this way, but I'm hungry, you know, that's all I can say.
Can I just make one point? There's, there's two RV parks in Scott County now. Where are they? They're in north of Dela Plain.
Yeah, Rogers Gap.
So they can exist, but.
I'm not sure those would meet all the requirements that we have on here, though.
Whispering Hills would.
Rogers Gap road's pretty, pretty poor, and I think it's longer than half a mile.
Yeah. I mean, it's pretty small, it's pretty narrow. I don't know how many units they have there.
About two hundred.
Yeah, well, I don't think that's, but they might be. I don't think it's half a mile.
I don't know, down next to Shawnee and stuff.
I, I think it's further than half a mile, but, but no, that road.
I'm talking about the one next to Shawnee. What, yeah.
Where's that?
Whispering Hills or whatever, it's on the way to Shawnee.
Yeah, that's on Rogers Gap.
Yeah.
But that's road about this big.
Yeah.
And I, I, I'd rather be like, it's maybe less than half a mile, I don't, I don't think it is.
Anyway.
But that's also north of mine.
What are you going to recommend, where you get to the point where you gave us something substantive?
No. No.
He said it's really different.
It's really different on land that it there.
The problem is, if we're going to protect the farmland, I don't know how we open it up south of that line. If we open it up south of that line, and then we've got each time there's a zone change, well, let's see, are we going to give up farmland for this? I, I, I think that's a double bargain, we don't want.
I mean, we give up farmland for other things.
For houses every week.
Not thinking about RV parks, but that same piece of property, Conley Farm out at the interstate, you know, what if a Flying J truck stop wants to come out there? That's the, that's where you would have it, on the interstate.
Yeah, on the interstate.
And again.
The plan would have to be updated, because at the moment, that's not, I don't think that's planned, it's not planned.
Yeah, no.
And that would take about ten acres, not two hundred.
Yeah, yeah. But again, it's prime farmland.
But I understand, I understand.
Couldn't put it on.
And if they bought a parcel that was ten acres, then we're going to put it on that. Well, that's what, now you're over fifty percent, right?
How about that?
Ooh, buckies. I'm voting for it. Whatever it is, it's yes.
All right, now.
Sheriff Mifflin, if I may.
Yeah, if you may. I was getting ready to ask you a question.
Okay, you go first.
Uh, does this have to be approved tonight? Do we need to talk with the fiscal court to see what their, how do they feel about this prime land?
You will get fiscal court's opinion as soon as you send it to them.
Okay.
Again, this has been an ongoing process.
Yeah.
And my conversations with fiscal, I think that they are ready to make some sort of action.
Okay.
I will now try to attempt to split the baby, so to speak. My, this is just staff's recommendation, and I hate to plan on the fly, but this is from the conversation that we've heard thus far tonight. We recognize the importance of preserving prime farmlands, while also understanding that there needs to be some sort of flexibility. Yes?
Yeah.
I would recommend section two point five point one four, that's the section that already deals with agricultural recreational uses.
You're talking about the new page we got to know.
Yes. First requirement is prime soils, soils of statewide importance shall not be prevalent in the development. You could change the word prevalent to predominant, which I think would be a slightly higher standard. That still shows that at the discretion of the word, because predominant would still be a discretionary term, that at time of rezone, it would be up to this board to consider. And then, let's not forget, after this board makes a recommendation, it would still go to fiscal court, and give them an opportunity to either concur or make other findings.
So then, what happens to the fifty percent number?
If we don't like fifty percent, which, again, you could just do a straw poll, if you like fifty percent or not, but you could get rid of that specific number, and just include, again, I like Farmer Murphy's perspective of no campsites, not the infrastructure to support them, but the campsite specifically, staying out of those areas of prime soils. So that would, in the event that there are areas where there is prime, it can have the road going to it, it can have the clubhouse, it can have the, the recreational facilities, bike trails, sidewalks, pickleball courts, whatever you want. But the campsites themselves need to be located in such a way as to help preserve that prime farmland.
But you're not really preserving it, though, in that case. You're still have roads and recreational facilities on it, so.
Then get rid of the requirement altogether. But again, that is not for staff, that is, that is the value of this commission.
And, and a comprehensive plan change.
Yeah, and the comprehensive plan, too.
Yeah, I mean, you really, if you're really going to throw that baby out, you got to go all the way back to the comprehensive plan.
I would, I would disagree with that, and I would only disagree with that because comprehensive plans are aspirational in nature. They do not create direct policies. We preserve prime farmlands a myriad of ways. This is but one way that we address that particular issue. And by maintaining that language at time of zone change, we show the intent of this commission to continue that mission.
Without putting a specific number.
Without putting a specific number on it. My perspective as staff.
That was kind of the question I was balling over, is if we're finding difficulty in toeing the line of discretionary, in a certain, is it the appetite of the commission that language pertaining to soils remains discretionary solely at the zone change zone standard level? And that's the stock gap, before you get to the development safety checks and rest out boxes. I think, I think that's all we can.
Yeah. That would be my preference, yes.
Yeah, I can deal with that. And that.
So then it takes out that hard.
But the, but the intent overall, that the discretionary status there.
Yes, to preserve prime farmland without a hard set.
I don't know if I'm correct or not. Where, let's see if I can start over.
Where the intent and the discretion is still there, again, kind of going back to our discussion about easements, et cetera, there are a lot of new, there's a lot more opportunity to catch and evaluate nuance by both staff and the commission at the zone change phase. Beyond that, you know, we've said this a hundred times, then you start checking boxes. Now, I guess the question is, is how strict do you want the language to be while still being flexible in the articles that pertains to the zone itself?
What we're talking about now is two C, right, specifically? Two point five point one six?
Two point five point one four one.
But also.
At the time of zone change.
Okay.
That's the ultimate.
So that, we're talking about the predominant language, right?
Yes.
So then what happens to this? Because if you leave this, then it doesn't matter what we do here.
Whatever you guys want.
But it needs, I guess, I'm going back to, to Charlie saying, well, you could change it to twenty-five percent, but it's not going to really matter, right? Still going to have to send them back, right?
Yeah, and it's, it's done.
There are a couple pockets. At least, I'm not going to make you go back. There are some areas south Rogers Gap, south of Dela Plain, that would, that don't have more than fifty percent. Where, where's the place?
Then if you overlay the road requirement.
It's pretty gone west.
I farmed there, too.
It doesn't, the, the point is, is, again, the intent of the ordinance is to be generally applicable. There, there will certainly be fringe cases for all things, that we are not going to address directly tonight. That's why when we write a code, we need it to be flexible enough to get us to where we want to go without things so rigid as to have these unintended consequences. Yeah, look west of the county there, there are a bunch of white, theoretically, you could locate RVs over there.
Depending on if the road requirement.
Yeah, depending on the road requirements.
So in and around Victoria City, we're talking.
Yeah, it's more city, there's plenty. So.
They're going to move that thing.
I would, again, I encourage specific conversation from the commission related to that fifty percent requirement as a development regulation, not, because I believe everyone on the commission currently wants discretion at time of zone change. And so this is specific to the development regulation. As staff has written, it's a fifty percent cutoff.
Which would then prohibit pretty much, I mean, nobody's going to come for a zone change if they know they've got to meet that requirement.
Yeah, that's just it. Why then grant a zone change if the development regulations are going to say, oh, you can't do that, it's more than.
To me, it has to.
There's other zones, right? There's other uses in the A1R, limited but other uses, that would not be affected by it.
They're going to be investing in the property based off of a plan.
Right, RV sites versus a true primitive campground. That one is not affected by prime soils.
Deer Lake.
Yeah, Deer Lake, Deer, Deer Lake and a, and a junkyard.
Basically lodges.
But if they're coming for a development plan, they have a business plan associated with it that has, right, projected profit.
Deer Lakes and northern parts.
I'm developing an RV park.
Yeah, but that's.
I have a business plan associated with it that says, here's what I need to do, here's how many units I need to get, right?
If I may bring up a specific subject, and I was sitting in one of your seats, I think it's, it's one of those two, because James was my whisper partner, he and Dan, there was a time where a developer came through, identified a parcel they wanted to purchase, and seek a rezone. Everything lined up, they were granted a zone change. Development plan came along, denied. It has happened before.
But we don't want it to happen. I mean, ideally.
No, 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 and that's the goal, but it has.
Might be adjustments to the development plan, or if they're not flexible, we might deny the development plan, right?
It has, I, I was a little flummoxed.
Yeah.
So, it was decrammed, remember that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it has happened, so I think it, I think.
But we had one last month, that was not a zone change, the development plan was.
Right, those parcels aren't zoned for years.
Yeah, for thirty years.
Already bought it?
So, yeah, already bought it.
Can we talk about that again, Mark?
Yeah. I know.
Okay.
All right.
So the question is, what do, this would sludge, though, right? Because if you change this, and, okay, this meets our intent of what we're talking about, changing this to predominant, but if this still says fifty percent, then it doesn't matter what we do here.
What we have to do is decide whether we want camp, uh, RV campgrounds in Scott County or not. I think we're thinking too far out of the box, let's simplify. If we want them to do it, we pass an ordinance that lets them come in and do it with regulation that staff has applied, let's, you know, we, we need to make a decision whether we want to save the farmland, or you want RV parks.
I don't think it's an either or.
Well, pretty much.
Yeah, it is.
To, to Charlie's point, if that land's not sold, let's say, I'm, we're talking about Conley's farm.
Yeah.
Just theoretically, right? I don't know if you have any idea of what he wants to do with it, but, my, forever. But, that piece of property, just because you say an RV park can go on there, doesn't mean something else can't go on there, right? Again, let's put the comprehensive plan for now to the side.
Yeah.
Because we're just using that piece of property, because you brought it up, Mr. Cornet, relative to interstate access.
It's there.
It's, it's, an RV park, a Flying Jays, a buckies, oh, this isn't necessarily about, oh, if we put this in, it's going to save all farmland. It's not that.
Well, first off, it's got to be in the plan. That's plan now.
I understand, I understand.
So it'd have to be planned. And, and as Brad mentioned a moment ago, for one thing, you're talking ten or twenty acres, an RV park, you're not talking ten or twenty acres, you're talking a couple hundred acres, maybe.
But it could be housing development.
I can't imagine we're ever going to put that in a complaint, but that's certainly, certainly possible.
Yeah.
And there you go, though, when you're talking about that, you're talking about people who will be citizens of the county living here, as opposed to people just come and go. Now, we're, should be beholden to people that are going to live here a little more than we are people just come and go, so we can make somebody else. Does that make sense?
You're talking about building them houses?
That's, see, I just, I just think those are two different things.
But either way.
Somebody in the county may want to be developing that RV park, you know, it's going to benefit somebody in the county.
Yeah. The owner of the property that wants.
Hey, blacktop at all, just blacktop. No, that's not.
You can't put any, hey, I'm a blacktop.
Nobody would cut anything.
Hey, Charlie?
Yes, ma'am.
It, it looks like this is coming to an end, or, or a decision, but I haven't had my chance to speak yet.
Okay.
Please.
And it's not going to be just stuff that.
Not the flexibility and things, it's some other things.
Are you signed in here? I know you swore, but are you signed in here?
No, because it wasn't here, this wasn't here when I came, sorry.
I just wanted to get your grief.
I know you did, you enjoyed doing that. Couple of, couple of things, I'm sorry.
For the record, would you please state your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Virginia Teague. On the roadways, we talked about one entrance and primary entrances. This has a capability of three entrances. What if you've got two different roads? You're going to have to have access on both that fall into the category of the three-foot. Your 150-foot is going to have to be extended if you have two different intersections. Because three is when you've got over 600 units, 600 sites. I think that you can't restrict yourself to the primary when you're talking about the expansion of the road. That's number one. Number two. We, the original discussion at the library was the 29 days for a maximum amount of stay, and that's been changed now to daily or weekly basis. Who draws the line? I mean, you could have 52 weeks. Who's going to draw the line?
I think the intent is no permanent, I can't remember the exact language, but...
Yeah, but there's no definition, I mean, it says no permanent, but, but permanent can be 26 weeks. That's a mobile home park, you know, frankly.
But I think that's, that's tuned more towards, like, construction workers that come in. A lot of them come in, they have an RV, they stay for, you know, two or three months, and then they get their job done and they head out. I don't think that pertains more to a, you know, a living quarter.
But that's not the definition of the RV park. The RV park is supposed to be recreational, it's an A-1R. It's not supposed to be a place where you can live because you're working not too far away, you know?
But whatever it is, we don't have the power to regulate it. And that's going to be...
We don't have the power to enforce it.
To enforce it, I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, the owner of the RV park is going to have to determine whether they want people staying there longer and...
How do the people that live nearby get to complain? Do they, how do they do that?
Then we send code enforcement out.
What code enforcement? Do we have that now?
County code enforcement, yeah, county code enforcement.
Oh, okay, well, then that's new, because they didn't have that before. Okay, then that's all that I had, other than, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I have to leave, so are we going to vote, or not?
Yes.
You asked a question about did we have to take action tonight?
Do we have to take action tonight?
Yes, and hold and answer that question for me. Yeah, if there's something that the fiscal court doesn't agree with, they'll send it back to us, okay?
Do we need to talk about both pieces separately?
So, I would argue yes, yes, in that particular instance. So the way, the way that this was advertised, just to be clear, was that the commission would be making action on Article 2 and then Article 4. And so anything within those articles, you have the discretion to make motions on tonight. And we've done a good job noticing this, we've met our requirements for that. And so as many separate motions as you want to make, you can make. That might also help clarify...
You can see that this one's already started.
Might help clarify, you know, that section 2.5.4 versus 2.5.16 versus Section 4.1.1 and 4.1.2, which are the four sections that have the part of us effect.
Say that all again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
So this is 4.0, this is 2.5.14?
So 2.5.14 is specific to agricultural recreational projects.
Okay.
2.5.16 is specific development regulations for RV parks.
Okay.
Then you have Section 4.1.1, which are, is our use table for the agricultural A-1 zone. And that is put in there specifically to allow those RV parks as accessory used to a principal agricultural use of the block. Of course, right? And then you have Section 4.1.2, which is the modification of the A-1R use table to allow as a permitted use by rights, still dependent upon a development plan.
Right.
RV campgrounds pursuant to, again, to Section 2.1 and 2.5 before.
So I would say then, I mean, it's, there are a few pieces that we have agreement on, those are the easy ones, right?
If you'd like, I can go back over those, just to clarify, we like those. And before we get too far, because it was brought up, and a big part of this is that very snazzy matrix of densities that we used. There was conversation from the audience, from the public, related to modifying those widths. Before we get, make motions, was there any appetite from this body to make modifications to that taken? Okay, I think that answers that question.
So, we could do a motion for this, which I think maybe we have some general agreement around, right?
Yes.
So I will make a motion, oh, we got to close public hearing, I'm sorry.
Yes, any more discussion?
What about the, what about the language on the...
Well, that's not what we're voting. Go one piece at a time, and then figure out the language piece of that. That's what I'm recommending, I don't know, at least to say, okay, now we're focusing on this one piece. That's, if y'all want to keep the public hearing open, you can keep talking about all of it.
And the commission can have discussion after the public hearing is closed.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing. And... I have only one sheet here for making, if we're going to make multiple.
So I will make a motion that we, for Section 2.5, 2.5.14, agricultural recreational projects. Item number one, we change from prime soils or soils of statewide importance shall not be prevalent in the development to shall not be predominant in the development.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Give me that number again, I'm sorry.
2.5.
2.5.14.
4, item one.
Okay.
And Elise does show that on the screen now.
Yeah. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green? And the chair votes yes. All right.
And then item 4.1.2 just simply brings in the RV campgrounds into that A-1R, right?
4.1.2, that is correct.
Okay, so I will make a motion for approval of the modification of 4.1.2, agricultural recreational A-1R zoning, for the addition of C, RV campgrounds pursuant to Sections 2.1 and 2.5 above.
Okay. I have a motion. Mr. Green, will you second that again there? Thank you, make it simpler. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Vest? Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green? And the chair votes yes.
And then I will make a motion on Article 4, 4.1.1 agricultural A-1, for the addition in item 2AII to add into the statement that begins, "Public and private parks and recreational areas to add, including RV campgrounds as an accessory use to the principal use on the property pursuant to Sections 2.1 and 2.5."
Second.
All right. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
That's all the empty stuff.
All right. Mr. Fleming? Is there anything else?
Yes, Section 2.5.16.
You know better than to ask him of that question.
The meat of the subject today.
We also need 2.1.
2.1 is definitions. We could go to do these one, adopt 2.1, adding the definitions as provided by staff.
Okay, say again?
Motion to recommend Section 2.1, modifying the definitions.
Motion to add 2.1 definitions as defined by staff.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Again, Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Vest? Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
And I think, I don't know that we can vote on it separately, but we do have maybe agreement on, I think, general agreement on two other language modifications within the RV ordinance, right?
Specifically, Section 6 related to the securities required, as well as a modification of roadways, Section G.I., related to the lengths from the primary entrance, as well as precluding the entrances from being accessed through easements on property. We wrote it up real nice, right there.
Y'all must think our eyes are better than they are. Oh, perfect. Okay.
So what section is that? I say G, so...
That is...
G.I., Section 6.
Section 6, G.I. 1. And the one above it is, are we going to do, again, the other one is, are we going to...
Yeah.
You want us to do these separately as well?
No.
The other one is 6. When we make the motion, we'll just have to reference these, the other one is 6.
Yeah, I think you could reference just the modifications.
The modifications, okay, that's good. So now it's just...
50%.
Two, yeah. The 2C.
Elise, do you think you're good on those edits, or should we read them into the record for when we have to transcribe tomorrow?
I'm going to look to the attorneys on that one and ask her if we have to, that is necessary that we read off the correct...
Did we not make it clear in the motions? I think we did.
I'm mostly looking for our benefit, who has to transcribe these at like a...
Oh, I'm not concerned about your benefit.
Or your transcription.
Just want to make sure we get the record correct.
Okay.
So did we answer that?
Charlie doesn't care.
Charlie doesn't care, okay. Just so he knows.
And I'm sure they're going to do this open, I have to do it first thing in the morning, so we can check and make sure.
Well, it's in red up there, while you had it.
Right, I'm just, you know, two is one and one is none. We got it.
It looked correct to me.
Yes, ma'am.
So then what to do with 2C?
Okay, so do we need a motion for both of those?
No, we had to do this one at the same time, because it's all of 2.5.16.
Right.
So we have to figure out, C, are we going to change it or not? As it stands, it says the 50%, which then ultimately... Ultimately, this is overriding what the development plan guidelines are. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So if we go with the 50%...
Well, if you use the predominant language in one, I mean, that's, that's a main element kind of definition. 50% is just a hard number. They're not necessarily the same. I think we need to have some consistency.
So you think this should say predominant?
I, I would think it would be easier to deal with if they both say predominant.
So then this would say...
If I may, would the assumption be that if it was rezoned with the concept plan that said it's going to be an RV park, would that not answer the question of whether or not it meets the requirement?
Language is inconsistent, that's why I think it ought to be the same language.
So call it predominant here, but that decision was made at time of...
I think, I think that is correct, but I just, I don't want inconsistent language.
So then this would also say, only those lands, well, we have to change the way it says now.
With...
That do not have predominant, I mean, there might be an easier way to say it that's more fluid and not so awkward.
Oh, that was a very fluid thing.
No, thank you, thank you, thank you. Only lands that are not predominantly prime farmland.
I see.
And farmland of statewide importance may be considered for this use. Did you get that? Only those lands that are not predominantly prime farmlands and farmland of statewide importance may be considered for this use. Is that what I said, did I say it the same the second time?
I agree. Let me share.
Elise, what is it like if we just copy the A-1R language into that? Thank you so much.
How about that for matching?
Yeah, let's match it. So then I will make a motion for approval of RV ordinance 2.5.16 with the changes noted to 2C.
2C.
6, the main bullet, the main item in 6, and G.I. 1.
For point of order, so not using the language number four, you leave the item C as written.
Do you want us to delete all that up there?
Yeah, I think that says it, yeah.
Is that...
It's written in the negative, I'm not...
Yeah, just, just copy paste, I think that's fine. Yeah, and then bring the other one over. And that way we know it's completely consistent and it's not written in the negative. That's what I was trying to get to, with not saying there was a way to do it that wasn't so awkward.
Charlie, does that give us discretion?
Yeah. Predominant.
Yeah, in the zoning.
Does that give us discretion here, or no? What's the bottom, you have to say?
As soon as you guys make that zone change, that tells staff what the determination is.
Yeah, it's done.
Yeah, that says it's not prevalent, or we've, yes, yes.
Because staff would not take a case that you've made that decision on and then make any other decision.
That's right.
So I made a motion, a motion on...
Brad seconded, whether he knows it or not. Paperwork's easier that way. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
I guess.
And Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? I'm glad you took us a separate night. That would have been a long, long night.